Good evening, everyone. At this time, we'll call the school committee meeting to order and ask everyone to rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next up, introduction of members. I'll start with Jane.
Jane Reggio from the town of Millville.
Matt Catalano, Millville.
Chuck Dunton, Blackstone.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
And Dan Keith, Millville. Oh, sorry, Blackstone. I just got off.
That's a big blooper.
Kristin DiNata, the Director of Finance and Operations.
Maya Gagne, Student Council President.
Julia Kurensik, Student Council Treasurer.
Jill Pillegallarani, Interim Superintendent.
Thank you. And next up is the update from the student representatives.
Okay. So at BMR, we had our annual pumpkin carving, and it was a big success on 10/29 with all the pumpkins being donated and delivered by Rojek's Farms. The band is leaving for their Nationals in New Jersey this weekend, this Saturday, so good luck to them. Football has made their playoffs, and they're reversing host gak on this Saturday. Girls soccer also made it to the playoffs, and their game was Monday. It was a tough loss, but it was a big win to make it there. The first quarter ended 11-4, and second quarter started yesterday. Fall Conference is going to be next Wednesday for the Central District of Massachusetts Association, and this is where a bunch of student councils come to a conference, and there's things like workshops where we can all bond as a district.
Yeah, we have 13 students from our councils going, plus you and me, so I think 15 total, because they don't count us, because she is a delegate on the regional board, and I'm state secretary, and we have our final preparatory meeting for that conference this Saturday. We are very excited. That conference will be hosting around 600 people, because there's up to 580 delegates, 34 advisors, and we have a couple new schools coming in, so that would be great. Our student council executive board had a great time at Officer Shop, which was hosted by our state on the 18th of October at Worcester Technical High School. And this past week, our Charges for Change Club hosted a senior intergenerational prom in which they went in the cafeteria, and it was all autumn themed, and they were able to make crafts, take photos, there was a name that tuned, and all the food was made by our Food for Thought classes at the high school, and we had students from NHS and student council volunteering for and running the event for our seniors. Pep rally prep is underway. You might hear your kids start talking about how they have to stay after school or come early to start prepping for pep rally, so they're getting all their lipstick dances together, pep rally banners, and everything is Disney themed, so everyone's picking different movies in different categories. The eighth graders have Star Wars, seniors have musicals, and the sophomores have decided on an action and adventure category. So lots of Disney themed pep rally festivities are underway at BMR. Our student council, National Art Society, and National Junior Art Society are all collaborating on a school-wide service project. It is Meal in a Bag, and we are collecting canned goods and non-perishable goods up until 11/19 in order to make Thanksgiving care packages for families in need in our community. Our mock trial team is also now underway with their first meeting. They received their case packet at the beginning of the month, and they will be assigned to witness teams at the following meeting. We also had our case release dinner this past week at the Chili's in Bellingham, and we had 20 students attend, and I think our mock trials team has grown up to about 24, and this is only our second year having mock trials, so those are great numbers for our school. And our Veterans Day breakfast, which will be hosted by Parks and Rec and will be helped run by student council students, will be this Sunday at the high school from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, consent, Agenda A. I'll take a motion to approve the warrants.
Some of.
Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, it's unanimous. And approval for minutes of October 9th and October 23rd, 2025.
So moved.
Motion by Chuck.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Is anyone here for public forum this evening? If you are, come up to the table and address the committee. Seeing none, we will move on. And next up, we'll have an update on the Eagle Scout project. I believe it's Kevin Burgess.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hello. Here it is. Do you want me to send that after? Here's some observation and photos. Thank you. So small introduction. I'm Kevin Burgess, the Eagle Scout candidate and Senior Patrol Leader of Troop on Blackstone. This is my dad, Mr. Burgess. He's the Assistant Scout Master and Order of the Hour representative. So here's my little speech. Good evening, members of school committee, teachers, and guests. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight. I'm truly grateful to everyone who helped make my Eagle project possible. First, I want to thank the amazing sponsors who supported this project. Mulally Firewood, Tel Stone &amp; Sons Inc., Ideale Craft Cannabis, Unibank, Select Painting Co., the Knights of Columbus, and all the other generous donors. Thank you to your, thanks to your support. We raised $4,007.92, and we spent $3,331.68 to complete the project. I appreciate your generosity more than words can say. I'd also like to thank my 13 awesome volunteers who helped me. From watering the plants to staining and moving materials, you all worked so hard, and I couldn't have done this without you, especially my team leaders who guided us every step of the way. A special thanks goes to the school committee and administration who supported and guided me. Ms. PG and Ms. Remka were always helpful in, helpful in making sure my project fit my vision. And thank you, Mr. Keith, for transporting the materials and letting us use your tools. Your support had made a huge difference. I'm also happy to share that $500 will be saved to help maintain the area we worked on, so it stays beautiful for your future students. The rest of the money, we would like to go towards Isaiah's Memorial Garden in the front, another special spot of our school. I hope this shows that a small project can make a big impact and help others, help keep our school looking great for many years. This project, this project will benefit our school for a long time, whether students are having outdoor lessons or enjoying a quiet place to eat lunch. I'm proud to have helped create something useful and lasting for our school community. Thank you again for listening, and thank you for being part of my Eagle Scout journey.
You have some questions. Matt?
I have no questions, just, you know, it's a great project. I mentioned that you did put the umbrellas up, and those are up, and so those look great too, but congratulations, Kevin. I saw it from the inside, you know, from inside the troop while watching him plan and all the different, you know, many, many different emails, texts, and, you know, trying to, you know, figure out what he's going to do. It was a lot of work that Kevin put into this, so congrats. You did a great job.
Yes, thank you.
What was the project? Yeah, new, so I didn't know what the project was.
The project consisted of basically renovating the former project by Casey Goyette. He did designs and built the deck out off the lunchroom. I stained it, I replaced broken boards and balusters. I also redid the tops of the picnic tables and rotting boards. We also did a garden and put stone under the deck.
Great undertaking. Thank you.
You did a wonderful job. It was a great leadership on your part in getting everybody together and get this done, and I think it's a great tribute to Isaiah's memory, and something you didn't have to do to contribute your fundraising leftovers to go to maintain that. And thank you again for your major contribution to the district.
Thank you. One more thing, Kevin. Can you come back and let us know, because this isn't done on his end. He still needs to go to his board review with the Eagle Board, with the Eagle Board. So when that happens, do you mind coming back and letting us know how that went? And, you know, we'd love to hear the, see the finalization of all this.
Okay.
All right. Excellent.
And I will say you have the biggest audience for Eagle Scout. Thank you very much. You can, Kevin, you can. Next up, we have student recognition, MCAS. Madam Superintendent.
So we want to welcome all the families and students who are here tonight for recognition of some of our kiddos who met exceeding expectations on their MCAS. We're very proud of you, and also a huge shout out to all the families for all of their efforts with the students and for our staff for all the work that you do with our students. So I'm going to, we're going to start tonight with actually Ms. Schaefer with Millville Elementary. She'll be presenting our current fourth graders with their awards for their performance on the third grade MCAS last year. And Mrs. Cody already said she's going to be very bossy, so you can all stand in the right way, she can get good pictures. No.
So first up, we have Alexander Murda for Math and ELA.
Are we taking all of them?
Yes.
So the third grade teachers, we had conferences today, so some of them were still conferencing when we left. For, next up, we have Ella Whitstone from Math and ELA as well. Next up, we have Nora Cordree for both Math and ELA. Next up, we have Aiden Scott for Math. And we have Aubrey Haywood for Math. And we have Albert Giuliano for Math. And then we have Sophia, sorry, Sophia Hill for ELA.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Mrs. Remka. Mrs. Remka has a few more grades, so she's got a little bit of a larger stack here.
Jane Tavi for Math. Cole Christie for Math. Shay Parisow for Math. Arthur DeSilva for Math. Oliver Morris for Math. James Foley for Math. Aria Ingham for ELA. Jack Rudrow for ELA. Kayla Kelly for ELA. Okay, grade five. Now is grade six. I should have done both of them together. Jackson Ingham. Next two, we don't have to do the cutout this year. We have Lily Rojact for ELA and Julie Rojact for Math. I have Lily Rojact for Math, ELA, and Science. And I have Julie Rojact for Math and Science. So the next set of twins, they don't want to be together. Noah Matinelli for Math. Rada Mukoko for Math.
See, you guys get it. One more. Good.
Is Hannah Steibl here?
No, he has marching.
Yeah, I think it is, yeah. Math, ELA, and Science. Jack Wash, Jack? Jack Wash? Is he here? Is he here? Okay, Math and ELA.
Good luck in the other wedding.
Julie Weber for Math. She's too shy. Callen Roderick, Math and Science. Anna Stephanate for Math. Here's the other half of the puzzle. Elijah Montnelli for Math. Maxwell McCain for Math. Elise Lapante, ELA. Jasmine Tsing Kong, Science. Ryan Bachalda, Science. Sockit Apa, Science.
Oh, Miss Larry.
Kaylee Medina, Science. Kopten Viviavito, Science. Sarah Greenlaw, Science.
Come on, Sarah, big smile there, over here, buddy. One more. Smile, Sarah. There we go. I think I got it. Oh, Sarah, that was perfect.
Chris Lindkoglen, Math and ELA. I do not believe she's here. Abby Fugliano, Math and ELA. Josie Nantes, Math. Abe Masaki, I believe she's not here. Also, indeed, it's your friend. Ayla Leno, Math. Catherine Boulay, ELA. Lucy Lovira. Kenny Berry, ELA. Ava Maykani, ELA. James Allen, ELA. Last but not least, Hallie Collat, ELA.
Is that everyone, Mrs. Remka? Oh.
So one that I didn't see, she was here. So Julia Buckland from Math and ELA.
Foulers for our high school. If you're after this, people, when you go back out, I know Mrs. Cody's going to try to wrangle some of our kiddos to take a picture of as many who are still up here. She does have her whistle. Let's not have to have her blow that whistle.
All right, I know we've got some banned people getting ready for their Nationals, so let's see. For in eighth grade, outstanding MCAS achievement in ELA and Civics, Rosalie Brier. In Math, we have Xiao Lin. ELA, we have Ivy Maloney. Oh, come back, come back, come back. I didn't get the, I didn't get the memo.
There we go. Good.
I'll do better next time. For Civics, Haven Orozco. Science, Kevin Roderick. See, we got this. For Biology, Joey Lafayette. For ELA and Math, Clover Maloney. I won't say you're skipping the M. No one needs to know. All right, come on first. See, I got it now. In ELA and Math, Caleb Bieber. In Biology, Raquel Stockdale. Congratulations. I like the shirt. And for ELA, Daniel Zarinsky. All right, very good. I will embarrass them tomorrow, I promise.
Hope to see y'all again next year.
Yes.
Get some more.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Four more every year.
Yes, it does.
Give them a minute. And they're off.
Yes.
Ten. LaBonte, sorry.
And then there was one.
Only out there?
Well, hopefully we'll continue on with the good news and get a Millville water update.
Yes, we have a Millville water update. So again, I'm going to read this description. I may not be able to explain any pieces of it, but I will share what we have. So I want to say thank you to Jen Gill for sending this along. So the acid washing of the well has been completed. Drop piping and stilling tube will be replaced within the well. And the well pump was determined to be operational by the water drill and will be reinstalled. It said there was testing done on the water from a water bearing fracture at approximately 24 feet below the ground. At this fracture, our water operator was able to collect a sample of the water and it was found to contain the TOCs and PFAS. The water operator requested the MAST DEP approve the installation of a Jazzwell seal, which is made of FDA food-grade approved materials to place inside the drinking water well for Millville Elementary School. This will help prevent water at this fracture from getting into our well. And she described the materials as being food safe. They anticipate the installation of the seal to be completed by November 7th. And they will turn on the new system as soon as MAST DEP gives them the clearance to do so. And again, the town of Millville will continue to provide bottled water for the rest of the school year. And right now, they're providing bulk water at the elementary school in the interim until they're able to turn the well back on for use. So I don't know if there was any questions. I'm not sure if I can answer them, but again, thank you to Jen Gill for sending this along.
Yes, thank you. That pretty much sums up what they said they had to do in the grant. But the 24 feet down is the infiltration from the fracture where the outside, the groundwater is coming in. So beavers or no beavers, it was still happening. I'll keep moving on, so if there are any beesness. MSBA update, Tara or?
Yep, I can start. So we are still in the preferred schematic submission phase. In your packets is a copy of a handout that we've created. So Jill has been providing this to families in our newsletter. It's on the website, the district website. It's on the Facebook pages. We actually created a Facebook page just for the school building project. It will be an info-only page, no comments. So every post has comments turned off. We want people to use the website or call into the school if they have questions, concerns, come to our meetings. But basically, we're in the design phase still. We're working with our team to get some new plans to help revise that submission. Not sure if this.
No, so in the community, every week, my community update, I have included this flyer as well as the link to the actual site right on our website. And also, it's been included. It started last week and it'll be this week. We do have a community open house coming up. It is November 10th, starting at 6 o'clock at the high school in the cafeteria. Our agendas have been just what we plan on doing that day. We're going to give a project overview. Our team will actually be giving a project overview, kind of talk about the MSBA process, where we've been, where we're going. We're going to review our current facilities at the high school. And they're going to be talking about being able to share some information about some of our floor and site plans and an opportunity for questions and comments. You'll also notice in the community update that I sent home, there is a link to, because this is going to be livestreamed. And if you have any questions during that presentation, you can send your email your questions along. We'll be able to answer them that evening as well. So we hope to see, you know, members of the community come out and hear a little bit more of what we're doing. And this is only the first of many community updates and forums that we'll be having regarding our building project. I think that's it.
Okay, great.
Very good, thank you. And next up, we have middle school field trips.
Yep, well, we're going to start with our eighth grade Washington DC field trip. Mrs. Phyllis is here to give everyone an update. And you'll see that there is a, just a brief flyer in your packets as well. The, we don't have an actual formal itinerary because we're experiencing government shutdown. And so they can't, they can't provide, the Capitol tours can't provide us with that until that is negotiated. So, but the same highlights as they have been doing year after year, there are only one change is that we would like to, the last couple of years, but last year particularly, it was more, it was almost 10 hours for the bus to get down to DC. And we would like to take the train. So we take the train from Providence. They would, we would be all in the same car. And they would, you know, negotiate and navigate that way. We have plenty of time. It is not in June. We're actually going to move it to April. Hopefully, we'll see some cherry blossoms, which will be lovely. The bus will still pick us up in DC and do all of that. But just to try to mitigate some of the traffic, we would, we would like, the cost is more. That's why we have the two options there for your feedback. But it's definitely not, still not cost prohibitive. So that is, that's what we're looking for.
Will there be a bus from here to Providence?
Yes. That will more than likely be an extra fee, but that's, we're talking small.
And how long is the train?
It is five hours, five hours. And again, which one we get, one has a transfer, which will be fine, yeah, I hear you. And one goes right through. One goes right through New York City. But one, so we're, obviously, we're looking for the one that just pauses and then doesn't do that. But, you know, leave no man behind. Or eighth grader. So, but yep, we still, it's still the 10 to 1 ratio. All of the things that they'll be doing, the lunches and dinners. There's breakfast at the hotel, but there's money. Students will get stipend or money for lunches and dinners that is included in here. The only thing that is not included is, would be the bus heading down. There would be snacks for the train ride, but there's a food car there as well. And then, oh, their t-shirt. But the, once we get everybody registered and do it, we're going to bring it together. We'll do that supplemental piece. We're thinking that's probably going to be somewhere around the $50 additional piece of that. But to do the train, they could actually get up and move around, which would be a nice thing, having them on a bus.
That'd be great.
Is there a financial aid option for students who cannot afford the?
So last year, we did do that. We did do a scholarship offer. Last year, it was they paid, that we were able to pay the first payment. The first, there were three payments. So we were able to pay the first of three payments. I believe we're still able to do that as well. Last year, we only had three families that reached out to do that. And so that was great. That left us with a little bit more of a pool of money. There, this was left over from, not pre me. And so we're hoping also to use some of that money to offset the bus on the way there.
Right.
How many students won last year?
Last year was our first time doing this. And so we had 36 and Mr. Dusharm. And this year, it's me. And, and we've got, we've got 130 who could go. So we'll see where we get with that. We're hoping for, we're hoping for two buses. We're hoping for two buses, we're going to go. We've got two grade eight teachers, who are teacher and one of our instructional assistants, who are leading the charge and they're doing an amazing job. There actually will be, like last year, two fundraising opportunities too, to help offset. There's a, there's a, they're going to sell, I think coffee is one and maybe popcorn or something. But they have two, they have two fundraising opportunities to, as soon as we're ready to go, we're ready to go.
Excellent.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the field trip request. Train and bus.
It's not or, right?
Well, it will be the buses is when you get down to DC. We would like to travel.
By train.
Interstate by train.
I make a motion to approve the field trip request form to Jill's plan.
Thank you.
To include all options.
To include all options, yes. Allow the students to take the train.
Motion made by Tara S., seconded by Tara L. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify.
Wait, I have, I, I really think we need to refine that because I know we're saying it's both options, but a student can't choose to just take a bus the whole time.
They're taking the train.
Are you motioning that we're going to allow for the train option?
I'm motioning for the train option. There's just that busing included.
Yeah, the buses when they get to DC.
Both options are available right now.
Right now, yes, we would prefer the Amtrak option.
The motion is then to.
For the train.
Clarified, the motion is for the train option. By Tara.
Yes.
Passed and seconded by Tara L. Thank you, Jane. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you. We will have this out and we'll, for anybody who's listening at home, if you, when you come for your parent teacher conference, which is next, on the 19th and 20th, we'll have more information for you there. That's hopefully the fundraising.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now the middle school field trip.
So in your packet, there are three middle school field trips. One is Nature's Classroom for grade six, which is, the date of the field trip is November 25th. Then we have the Museum of Science, which is for grade five, which is in May, May 19th. And then we have the Mystic Aquarium for grade four on June 2nd.
When's Thanksgiving? 2027?
That's the make of.
Yes, I believe it's a Tuesday.
I know what you're going to say, no school, right?
No, there's.
Or they get early.
It's the Tuesday.
Wednesday is the early release.
But it's Tuesday.
I'll make a motion to approve the middle school request for field trips as requested, as written.
Second.
Motion made by Matt, seconded by Tara Locken. Any further discussion?
So with the Nature's Classroom, didn't they used to stay over?
Yes, they did.
Didn't they used to sleep out?
Yeah, they did.
When did we stop that? And when, and why did we stop it?
The cabins had the years of lice.
Was it lice or bedbugs? I think it was bedbugs.
Bedbugs.
I want to make sure that I heard, I heard that correctly because that's what came home to me. It was that it was a sanitary issue.
That stuff happens.
Fair enough, fair enough. Oh, believe me, I know camp. Neurovirus is a fun one. But I just wanted to make, so we've.
So then we tried to switch to a different Nature's Classroom location and then there were issues there and then COVID and then.
So this is, this is, okay. Just want to make sure that I was hearing things correctly. Not to dissuade any parents, you know, we're doing what we can to keep it.
I mean, there are schools that go there for like the week. They do that.
Well, that's what I'm noticing is that there are schools that spend some time there.
And usually go at the start of the year to get the students. Bond.
My kid, well, one of mine went a long time ago. It was the overnight, it was before the bedbugs. And they had a great time. It was a really good experience.
I would love to see us get back to.
Yeah, it'd be nice to get the overnights.
That's what I was getting at was, you know, it seems like there's an opportunity there to, especially at this, this grade level, for them to experience that. But that's all I had.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous. Report of the superintendent is up next.
So I want to start with a quick athletics update. So I just wanted to publicly wish our current Director of Student Athletic Life, Student Life, the best of luck. She's going to be moving on to different opportunities. Her last day is going to be November 26th. And with that, I wanted to announce that we have a new Director of Athletics and Student Life. She's going to be joining us, Elizabeth Barrard. If you've heard that name before, she actually worked in the district a previous year as one of our teachers. So she will be returning. She's actually going to be coming on officially on the 24th. So Darlene and Elizabeth will have a couple of days of overlap to kind of get everyone caught up. So we're really looking forward to Elizabeth joining our team again. And just a quick overall athletics update for what I have now. So winter sports registration is still open. The last day to register, December 5th. And trials do begin the week before, the week of December 1st. Parent winter sports meeting, it is going to be scheduled for Monday, the 24th. So be on the lookout for more information. And it is a little bit later just because our new director is going to be starting, so she will be hosting that event. Winter sports, our varsity girls and boys basketball teams, both have a 20-game full schedule. Our boys JV currently have 14 and our girls JV are 12 that are confirmed right now. And our middle school boys are at seven and six. I did get information from our current director that official waivers were just submitted to the CMAC as well as MIA, MIAA, to make, to see what the team configurations are going to look like, to give us more information if, you know, towns are going to be doing middle school or JV. Our indoor track league, the schedule was released on Tuesday. There are going to be six meets and the one optional meet, which is an invitational, they are going to be participating in. For the winter, we have both sideline and competition teams, both for the high school and the middle school levels. And then with the completion of the fall season and finalizing all of the winter, the spring is in process. Right now, we have 20 confirmed games for our varsity baseball team. Right now, there are 12 for the varsity girls softball, but the AD is working on securing the last eight games. So our varsity girl softball will have 20. And the JV and middle school is still in progress because they have no idea yet what that's going to look like for teams. Our girls tennis team is going to have 10, as of right now, 10 league games scheduled, but more being looked into. And spring track, we're just still waiting for the league, the CMAC league schedule to come out. So that is my sports update.
Jill, quick thing on the schedule. It's been noticed that some games are labeled league when they're non-league and non-league when they're a league.
Yep, we're already, yep, already addressing that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
No, my only other update, just a reminder, I will be attending the MAS C, MAS S conference. I am going to be there on Wednesday and Thursday. I'll be back in district on Friday. And I'm looking forward to sharing with the committee any updates or information that I receive when I go. Any last minute takers?
When I, when I, I think, wouldn't I get on this committee 17? No. So at some point, we had a. I think the MAS C came out to give the training.
Of course, yep.
Oh, charting the course, you mean?
Charting the course, thank you, thank you. Can you see that, if that's available?
Absolutely.
Like for me, in the next year? I don't know.
Take it online now.
Yeah, but they, they come in as well. Yeah, they give us just a present, right? They gave us a present. It's been four or five years, right?
I can definitely look into that.
That they came here, yeah. You only initially had to do it when we, when you started.
When you're.
Yeah, so actually, so to that, if.
So after April, if there's new people.
That's right, yeah. If they still do that. Now I'm not asking, I'm done asking just.
They do, they still do.
They do, that's one of the presentations that I signed up for as well. Just to get information about. I'm trying to do a variety of things when I go. And one of them was, you know what I mean? The school committee, superintendent, relations, town relations, responsibility. There's a, there's a lot of different conferences that are being presented that day. So I'll see what I can find out for you.
Yeah, yeah, so I think we did that like in the summer anyhow.
I can do that.
If you don't mind looking.
Yeah, no problem. And that was it.
I'd like to see that, relations with superintendents and towns.
And school committees and towns and towns all. Regional school districts that have two towns and two of everything.
Well, we're doing better than Hardwick and Whitman. Sure, 104 million. Okay, thank you. And next, the business office.
All right, so we're going to start just with an FY26 budget update. We're still really early in the year to see where we're going to land at the end of the year, but I am looking to see how we're trending so far. As far as salaries, right now, we're trending with. As far as salaries, right now, we're trending with the savings. And that's due to vacancies and grant funding that we've received. Somewhere, I think at the end of all the savings right now for the, for the budget, we're at $363,000. I think we have a long way to go before we can really say that that's where we're going to end. But right now, the salaries are in good shape. I also did a little bit of a dive on transportation. As far as athletics transportation, we are collecting money right now for user fees with our athletics in the hope was that those user fees would help mitigate the expense for transportation. And right now, what we've taken in for the fall season has been able to cover all the expenses for transportation for August and September. So we still have October, that'll, that'll, we'll have to pay for, that'll come out of the general fund. But it was just kind of a, a little bit of looking at how, how that's going to trend with our fees that we come in and with the athletics transportation. So my guess is by the end of the year, that, that line will run over budget, but we'll keep an eye on it. And I think that has to do with the, the new system that we have and that these buses are going really to some far.
Far places.
So we have that as far as out of district transportation, that is staying pretty flatlined with what we have budgeted as well as our out of district tuitions. And also benefits, it looks like there is a, for retired, retired benefits, we were notified that the renewal rates in January of '26, there's going to be a 17.03 increase for those people, which is more than what we anticipated. So that will, you know, adversely affect our budget. So those are the big, big numbers right now that I have so far for the FY26 budget. Any questions on that? Okay. Next, we just have the personnel report of what we have for resignations and appointments. We do still have a few vacancies that we're, we're working on there. And then I think the expenditure report I spoke with as far as with the budget update gives you the information there as well as the interest we have received so far to date. And the last item in my, my section here is transfer approvals. So you will note or see that there were quite a few transfers done in the past month and there's four different categories as to why there's so many budget transfers. One has to do with the grants that we've received in the beginning of the year. We are setting up all the newly awarded grants and any amendments that have been done for these grants. I've also tried to move budgets around to align properly with DESI functions and that's for our end of year reporting to make sure that when we do the reports, everything is in the correct categories. I have tried to just condense some of our GL accounts that we have, just for ease of reporting. And there has been a couple of instances that we've had to move budgets within a department to be able to cover unexpected expenses that we have. And I think that is it. And then we just, as long as there's no questions, I think there'll be need approval of that.
Yes. Any, any questions from the committee? I'll take a motion to approve the budget transfers.
So moved.
Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Matt and Jane. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you, Kristen. Moving on to the facilities report. Good evening, Scott.
Evening. We are moving right along. A&amp;M compressor diagnosed a bad compressor head on the compressor at the high school. This compressor unit has two heads on it, so it is currently still running. It provides the air to the pneumatic systems for the heating system at the high school. Once again, another part that's getting old and failing. So they did provide us a quote, so we're looking to get that replaced. As you know, the scoreboard had issues. Enterprise scoreboard came out and they replaced the bypass switch inside, bypass switch inside the scoreboard. That switch was failing, causing the top half of the scoreboard to go out. When we all thought it was losing power and it was the general, the solar panels and all, it was not the solar panels, that all the batteries that had anything to do with it, it was that switch going in and out. So that's been addressed. They did not provide the sound system with that scoreboard, so they couldn't really give us any further up, you know, input other than the system is maxed out and for what it is. And we could definitely use more speakers at the other end of the field. So we'd have to figure out a way to do that. Something to look into. And the girls softball field has been dragged, it's looking much better. It will have to be done again after the winter, but, and we did start on the balls, the boys in field as well, so. Those are coming along, but once again, it's just preliminary and final touches will be done first thing in the spring. Harton Middle School, I know I told you we had a bad booster pump that was leaking. I was able to successfully rebuild that pump and it is no longer leaking. However, that system is, and we've been told this by a different, couple of different people, that it's a system, it's an old system, it needs to be upgraded. So at my conference last week at the DCU Center, I found a industrial pump company that is willing to come out, give us a quote and make any adjustments to the system we currently have that they think may be needed, just, just to keep it running. But they will provide us a quote. Last week, when the head custodian came in, there was an auxiliary alarm going off inside the main office. It's a control panel for the generator, tells us when there's issues with the generator. Every week, the generator goes through a normal run every Monday morning. So if there's an issue, it tells us and this issue came up. So we had FM generator come out and they diagnosed a bad faulty regulator valve along with possible LED circuit board and another split board that they had to replace. All three parts were bad, unfortunately, so they had to replace all three of them. I worked with them last night to 6:30 to get that going because of the high wind warnings last night. And Halloween, I was biting my fingernails, hoping we didn't lose power. Sure enough, at 12:15, I got a phone call that the alarm system was going off and this usually indicates that we had a power outage. By the time I got here, the power was back on, thank God. But on my way here, I did get a phone call from the Millville Fire Department that their fire alarm was going off. So I had to go there and you'll see the Millville, FM generator did come out on October 24th to the Millville Elementary School and replaced the radiator and that, got the system back up and running. However, this time, it did not start up due to a low oil pressure alarm. I was able to start the generator up and reset the circuit breaker, get the power going back to the building. So the fire panel was back to normal and, and as many of you know, the power did not come back on until like 5:00 AM that morning for some people, some people went 12, 14 hours. Sorry, Matt. So yeah, so that was good, I was able to get it up and running. They're going to come out on Monday, the Professional Development Day, and check it out further. Let's just find out why that happened. I'm suspecting a possible, maybe a leak in the oil line, so air gun in there. Because as soon as I started it up, it was running with 70 pounds of pressure, so it was, it was good to run. I wasn't worried about it. Where was I? So that's, so the generator here is back up to normal, everything's good. There is a hot water circulator pump that's hanging from the ceiling that has a leaking gasket. I'm hoping on PD Day, I can change that out as well and fix that. That gasket only leaks when the water cools off and the rubber shrinks and just a slow drip. Hoping to get that done PD Day. And I'm still waiting on Evron to come out and I'm hoping they're coming out on the 10th to change out the failing valve on the fire, fire pump system. So moving on to Millville, we talked about the generator there, that's, we're going to find out more on Monday. And as you know, the walk-in cooler from the last school committee meeting had issues and that has been repaired and is functioning as normal.
Questions?
The high school gym?
Yep.
New basketball nets, do we?
These basketball nets.
Is that something you would do or have one of your guys do?
Yep.
All of them, they're all shredded.
Okay. We'll get that out.
I can't help but notice that there's no update on anything that needs industrial burner. Have they been replaced with industrial pump? Is that the same company that just changed their name to?
It is not the same company.
I shouldn't jinx us though because it really, the brand isn't.
Well, it's funny you say that because the boilers I just, since I typed up this report, have been tripping off still at the high school. So what I did was I reached out to Alanco, which was the company that initially installed that system back in 2010 when we converted from oil to gas. They came out today, spent the day there, going through the entire system, sticking the probe in the chimney to see how much oxygen was coming out and how much. And they, they fine tuned it, so I'm knocking on wood that we have no more issues. And they did spend the entire day there working on the system. So it may be a company we may be hearing from more often.
All right, thank you, Scott.
You're welcome, thanks for bringing that up. Ironically, right?
Use of facilities requests.
Okay, so we can start with, first one is the BMR Drama Club. They're having a performance Friday and Saturday from 6:00 to 9:00. So they are going to be in the auditorium, it's a group one. And the charge for this is only going to be for that Saturday and that's for $186.56.
That's to cover the cost of the custodian.
Custodian on Saturday. Yep, just for the Saturday. Next one that we have is the Blackstone Parks and Rec, which I know we.
Do you want to take these, wanted to, just because some others have some, you may have some questions.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question on the first one.
Okay.
So the BMR Drama Club. Oh, okay, so it's outside, something go outside the.
No, it's our students.
It's because it's on a Saturday, so that the charge is only to cover the custodians that come in that are not scheduled that day.
Okay, that's all.
They charge.
They do charge, yes.
Thank you.
So do you want a motion?
Sure.
Move to approve. Second.
Made by Jane, seconded by Tara. Scobie, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
All right, then the second one is the Blackstone Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec. There's a community event, the community-wide holiday celebration that they're going to be holding on Saturday, December 13th, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. They are going to be serving refreshments and that one, I believe that we have an email, is that the one that we have an email?
We do, did you just want to go through what the charges were?
Yes, so there are charges for this, they are looking to request the cafeteria and the kitchen where they would be, because they have both locations and it is a Saturday, the charges that we would have on this is for a custodian that would be coming in that was not scheduled to be working that day of $419.76. And that's nine hours at a Saturday rate. And then because they are going to be cooking in our cafeteria, we would have to, based on our policy, have a kitchen supervisor present as well. And that cost is $298 with a total cost of $718.65 for the event. And that is, and just, I guess, we, we would have to actually bring in staff that normally do not work these hours. So that is money that is coming out of our pockets that is not expected.
So we received an email, Celeste wasn't able to be here and I think she mentioned Sarah Peters may have, but she sent an email just in case either one of them couldn't attend. And she said that they, they are requesting to use the Harton Middle School Cafeteria for our hometown Christmas celebration. We'd like to use it from 8:00 to 5:00, this will allow us to decorate, have the event and clean up. Our event is an opportunity for businesses and local nonprofits to give back to the community with the free event. Santa arrives at 2:00 and pictures are taken around 4:30. We need the use of the kitchen to cook and serve hot chocolate and hot dogs. We have serve safe certified people that can cook those items. We do respectfully ask that you waive the fee as this is a free event for the community. This is a very popular event and we believe it will be even bigger than last, so we hope you will grant us the use of the facility.
So it looks like we, this shows that it is a free usage fee, like we waived the usage fee. And just the other, the $718 is the fees for the custodian and supervisor. Are they asking for those to be waived too, or were they asking just for the usage?
There is no usage fee, I believe that they're looking to have any other fees, I don't know.
Are you think they're asking for the whole thing?
No, Celeste, they're asking for that to be waived, yes. I think they have this every year, the hometown Christmas celebration.
They've had it at different, different locations, it was the boys and girls.
Boys and girls.
Yeah, but I think last year they had it.
They had it, yeah, last year.
Did we waive the fee last year?
We did.
Yes. And the town of Blackstone is good enough to waive the fees on maintaining the fields and everything else that, at the, at the. This is the typical back and forth with.
Using their ball fields.
I'll make a. Coordinating with Scott.
I'll make a motion.
It's not a high.
To approve the use of facilities for the Blackstone Parks and Rec at a zero dollar fee. And that the district will complement the Parks and Rec with the fee, for the fees.
Motion made by Matt.
Second.
Seconded by Jane.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Sure.
The kitchen staff needed, they have serve safe, she says in that email. Do we need to supply? Isn't necessarily.
Because it's our own kitchen equipment.
Yeah.
It's in the contract that the kitchen staff has to be.
And I'm thinking of like, typically they just had hot chocolates and stuff.
They've always had hot dogs and, yeah, I know in the past, they, they had hot dogs.
So they're going to use our equipment?
Yes.
They're going to cook.
I wasn't sure if they're coming with like a little hot dog roll in the machine, you know?
With the little trays and warmers and.
Yeah.
That's probably what they're going to do, but the way she writes it up is, yeah.
And I'm sure they'll be using their server to come in and grab and go.
Sure.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it, it's unanimous.
All right, the next one that we have is the BMR Drama fundraiser. This is going to be, they're hosting a movie night for kids in the district, $10 each, $25 per family. The Polar Express will be the movie and it's a fundraiser for the drama club. So it's going to be at the high school in the auditorium on a Friday night, December 5th. And this is actually a no charge because it is during time that we have a custodian staff, so. So moved. So this is just use of the facility and just.
No charge.
No charge.
Okay, good.
So moved, second.
Motion made by Tara S., Scobie seconded by Jane and Tara Locken. Any further discussion? So I like this though, it's, so we're not charging them to raise the money to pay us.
But to do the show.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So hopefully they'll raise enough money to pay the bill.
I hope so. Okay.
And then I think we have, oh, go ahead. The last one is for the BMMA.
All right, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to add to that conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, the ayes have it. Floor is yours.
Sorry, I apologize.
Did we make a motion and a second on that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
And two seconds.
Thank you though, because I often do forget to finish off the vote.
So the last one we have is the BMMA Community Performance and this is the Winter Percussion and Winter Guard Home Competition featuring teams from all over New England. This is at the high school, they'll be using the auditorium and the music rooms on February 21st, it's a Saturday, from 12:00 to 7:00 PM. They are going to be serving refreshments and they are charging a fee to, to attend. And on this one here, we do not, we're not charging a fee, however, we do have a custodian charge because it is a Saturday of seven hours of $326.48.
So moved.
Motion made by Jane.
Second.
Seconded by Tara Scobie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
That'll be all, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
So these are getting much clearer. So I don't know if you all are working more with people, but I do appreciate that. So thank you.
And then you have one more.
Yeah. Oh, we have another.
We have another one?
The surplus.
Just the surplus?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Is there a fee on the surplus?
No, there's no fee. We'd like to get rid of these old ancient machines.
So moved.
Yes.
So what do we have for surplus?
Hearing machine.
A hearing machine and yes.
Audio meter.
And way back.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Well, I probably could use that hearing machine.
Except it's broken. I already checked it out.
Yes.
Come again? Motion to approve surplus disposal or dis, removal or?
Some of it.
Thank you, thank you. First, Tara and Tara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. School committee forum. Anyone have anything, any school committee member have anything to add?
I got something.
Tara?
I want to make a request that on our December agenda, we have a discussion piece of opening up the superintendent search.
Okay. Yeah, well, yes. Well, okay. Then if we're going to do that, is that our next meeting? So we're going to have to schedule, schedule an executive session before that, before that, we'll have to have an executive session before we do that. Because we are currently under contract with an acting-
So it can't go under the, so it can't go on the agenda for the 11th?
It can. We'll have to, if you want to-
Oh, we will have to separate.
So we'll have to have an executive session before that because we are currently under contract with an interim superintendent.
So should we do an executive on the 11th instead?
Well, we'd then, we can't, I'm not going to, we can't have an agenda item for a superintendent search until we resolve the current situation, without getting into too much detail here. But we have a current interim superintendent under a contract that we would have to discuss under executive session before making that step. Which, that's all I can say about that right now.
Do we want to look at dates?
Sure.
Or is that-
Well, we have to, well, so.
So we have a contract.
Yeah.
That indicates that we will have conversations and review with the interim superintendent. That doesn't stop us from starting a process necessarily, but I think that conversations-
That's right. Has to take place. Yes. So I think, I can't remember if I, we said this, I think I said this in the last executive session. So I'm being careful of what I'm-
Correct.
Yes. I have, yes.
There will be a meeting in November.
I can, how about this? I can put the discussion for superintendent search on the December 11th meeting. That's a yes. I will also schedule an executive session sometime after Thanksgiving and before December 11th.
December 11th.
That, that-
Okay.
Cleans that and then we can have those discussion. So yes, Tara, yes, you can have that on the agenda. Okay. Anyone else for school committee forum?
Just a reminder, people come Monday, the 10th to hear more about the school building project.
All right. Anyone else?
Yes.
Matt?
So a few things. I just wanted to, I know probably everybody's seen my obnoxious posts on the Boy Scout and Cub Scout pages, but we're really just proud to be able to have helped the town donate over 6,000 pounds of food between the scouts, everybody in Blackstone and Millville, the firefighters, the Girl Scouts, NHS members that helped out collecting. We're super short this year as far as help, but the town, regardless of having tags on their doors, put out, put out food. So just a huge thank you. Just to put it in perspective, the biggest turnout I think we've ever had for scouting for food was just around 3,500 pounds.
Wow.
And so we nearly, nearly doubled that. So just wanted to let the towns know that it's not done. You can still donate to, to them, to the Blackstone Millville Food Pantry. They're always in need. So just stop by there, check, check it out and see what you can donate. But just really humbling for us to, you know, we had scouts out there. I was out there on my own, trying to get ready to go to the band competition that night and getting calls from pretty much everyone in the Fonso Estates. I hope I got everybody. But we had to take a different car that night because there was about another 250, 300 pounds of food that I collected in the afternoon there. So just amazing, you know, all the stuff that the two towns, you know, you know, squabble about and everything, you guys came through and just an amazing turnout. So thank you. The other thing I wanted to let everybody know is Maya alluded to it earlier. Tonight's the last practice for the marching band. We're going to get out in time, it looks like, to see their final run-through before they head out down to MetLife. The final run-through will be at 8:40 tonight. If you have not seen the show-
Oh, it's amazing.
Go check it out. It is, I've been watching marching band shows since I was four years old, and this is probably one of the best ones I've ever seen. Just a really amazing show. They have some really special kids out there. So check it out and hopefully we can, you know, report some good news after Saturday.
When, when are they leaving on Saturday morning?
Report time is 7:45. They go on at 4:15. I don't know if it'll be, in past years, it was streamed through Flow Marching. I don't know if we have that contract anymore, meaning US bands. But it may be streamed. But they go on at 4:15.
4:15.
And we'll, we'll know at around 6 o'clock what the times are. But currently, they're still tracking at number one in the country for US bands in their division. So it's pretty special this year.
What's the forecast look like Saturday?
Beautiful. 60 degrees.
Rain in the morning, but then-
Yeah, rain in the morning, 60 degrees in the afternoon, thankfully, because the past two shows have been about 35 degrees, 40 degrees cold. So, but yeah, it's going to be a good one.
Good luck.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? And yes, Matt, I'd like to top what you said. Good luck to the marching band. Congratulations to the football team for making the playoffs. Congratulations to the girl soccer team for making playoffs. And unfortunately, they, they lost their first game playoffs, but they made it.
They made it.
That's right. So.
Small stuff.
To all the students tonight that were recognized for their achievements and a special thanks to the teachers who assisted them with those achievements and the staff. I'd like to thank you Jennifer Gill for the water update and being, you know, consistent and in keeping to, Millville keeping to their word to keep us in, in the loop on the information. And thank you Tara for, I think you did share a small town post with an update as well. You know, it's nice to see. I don't, I gotta tell you, I don't know who the small town post is. But they do a great job.
I have a few guesses, but I've narrowed down.
I, I got a text yesterday from the-
Matt.
Taking credit?
No, no, no.
I know it's not Matt. It's way too well written.
Oh, wow!
AI is a wonderful tool.
I've, I've seen your Facebook posts. Not that it's, you know, well-written. It's just, yeah, this is way too, like in the middle.
Very professional.
Very professional. And I can make the same comments about myself, not being professional, being on your-
No offense, Dave.
Again, I thank you to Darlene for her service and welcome Elizabeth, is it? And again, and a great job by Kevin Burgess, the Eagle Scout. Did a phenomenal job. And it's, it's nice to see with the food drives, the Eagle Scout projects, the communities, when the community needs to, it, it comes together for the greater good of all. And with that, I may have something on the agenda that for this committee to consider on maybe some of our space with potential room for seniors at, potentially at the Maloney School as well. So maybe, maybe Blackstone, maybe Blackstone and Millville combined. So I've been talking a little bit with Jill about it and some of the towns. And so hate to see the space sit there dormant when it can be used.
It needs, yeah.
And be more than happy to talk to anyone who is one-on-one about it moving forward without violating any open meeting law. I'm not putting that on-
Put it on the agenda.
Okay. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Matt, seconded by Chuck. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.